Yeah, yeah, we'll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Here.
Councilwoman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Here.
Councilwoman Petty?
Here.
Councilwoman Moore?
Here.
City Attorney Griffin?
Here.
First item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the minutes as presented from last month's meeting.
Since I wasn't here, I don't think that's...
And at the same year, I wasn't here, so I feel like I don't...
You say I'm motion, right?
I'll see that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Next item is a consideration of non-emergency invoices over 10,000, which there... Is there not any?
Yeah, there are some.
Well, there is?
Yeah. You have an expense approval report in front of you, which not to be actually voted upon, but we're trying to show you everything we've got. Everything in there is normal operations, health insurance, sanitation fund, loan payments. Only one that's a little bit different is one on top, dynamic cones and structures. You see a $27,360. That is one you've already approved for the fence down at Industrial Park. That would be a positive. Any questions? Thank you.
Next item is going to be citizens' concerns.
Before we go into citizens' concerns, I did want to add, I'm going to ask the council to add three agenda items to the agenda. I don't know if you guys want me to do that individually, if you want me to put them all together, whatever you want me to do.
Are they going to be individual items?
They will be.
Then just do it individually.
I don't know if you want me to say what they are before we vote on them, or my first one is Public Works New Hire. Second one is citizens' concerns. Third one is Hometown Halloween. If you'd allow, if I can get a second on that, to add those three to the agenda.
Oh, it was a second.
Citizens' concerns.
What was the third one? I'm sorry, Jessica.
Uh, Hometown Halloween.
I'll second it.
Appreciate it.
You're saying you're good for all three, or just...
For all three.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we're citizens' concerns again.
Are we going in an order?
No.
Okay.
Whoever wants to talk.
I just wanted to come one more time and ask that you guys reconsider not closing the streets for Hometown Halloween. I've given you guys a lot of information before. I think a piece that's new this time is that it doesn't seem that there's a Market Fest this month like there was last year, so it doesn't seem like there's an alternate event. So this is now the only event in town. We already have like 15 people signed up for the trunk retreat before we even put the list out. It's a tradition, and I really want to see it as safe as possible. And it's the center of town. That's why it's there. It's why it's been there, so. I just wanted to come to ask one more time for you guys to reconsider to add that to the resolution. If you feel at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Again, I just want to reiterate what came up in the public hearing, if I can. I would...
If you just want to say it again, you can say it again.
Okay. Well, we talked at length about the building and the architecture firm that was hired, and I would ask, respectfully ask that the council open it up to a request for qualifications for any architectural firm in the middle Tennessee area who has energy-efficient qualifications to build, to design the best, most energy-effective building possible and to do with all expediency in possible.
Is there any reason not to? Just, can we do it? If you want to. Can I make a motion that we do that? Well, we gotta wait, it's on the agenda, so. It is on the agenda? It's not on the agenda. Motion to add another agenda item. Second. All in favor? Okay. All right, FQ. Okay. All right, is everyone done speaking?
No. Did everybody have a vote in favor of that?
Yes, it was just...
My name is Michelle Green, and I really agree with Stephanie. I think this is something that we can bring all the town and the kids together, close the streets. What's it gonna hurt? If people don't like it, they can go down the back streets. It brings the town together. Now, the little kids out there, and sometimes she's been doing it for a while. Why stop it?
Anybody else? Nobody else, okay. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I want to do an update on the whole Avenue project. The first section of the pipe is up, functioning and working. All taps have been put in. It's working fine with no issues. Next item we got on there is called a walk, at the walking track, the Rotary Club's approached me about doing a storybook trail. So I want to let Councilwoman Knappel explain to what that is and what they're willing to do and see what y'all think about that idea.
Okay, thank you. This is something that I first heard about. It was not my project that was proposed at Rotary, it was actually Melissa Abear brought it up, but I love the idea. This, a lot of the state parks have storybook trails, and it literally is a walking track that has, along the track, it has a couple of pages of a book, and I'll pass this around so you guys kind of know what that looks like. And the kids are walking around and reading the book as they walk the trail.
Where's this at? This one?
This one, I don't know. I just got those pictures. But I saw it at Bledsoe Camp. There's a wonderful one at Bledsoe Camp. And so when she brought that up, there's also a grant that we can write to get that. It's about a $4,000 budget, and I have that here if you guys need to see it. But we have a pretty good chance of getting that grant, but we need the approval of the place that we're going to, we would like to propose to put that. And we would like to do it at the walking track here in the town of Carthage, draw more people to exercise. The actual book that we propose is done by a local author, by Larry Poole, Larry and Cheryl Poole. So there would be about 10 of those with two pages of the book on each, so about 20 pages. So we would be installing 10 of those.
Now, would you change the book out?
You can change the book out.
So is that going to be the same thing, or...
No, they changed the books out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who's responsible for that?
There you go.
Who would be responsible for that? As far as installing it?
What, choosing what book?
Oh.
What kind of book?
Um, and that's a little bit of a process, but we've looked into that because it's a copyright issue, so you would have to have the copyrights for that book. But we have local authors that have done some wonderful children's books, and so we proposed this because they can adapt it to the 20-page limit that we would need. It is actually written by a local engineer scientist that is very interested in science and space travel and that kind of thing. So it's also going to get kids interested in science, and they will give us the rights to it at no cost. So it would just be a matter of having the labor to install those and make sure it's not a FEMA issue.
I would think it's because it's not...
It doesn't appear, it's not a structure.
I mean, I'm going to always check with FEMA.
Absolutely. And we knew that would have to, but we would just like to have the city's approval that if everything falls in place, we get the grant, FEMA's okay, if we could put it at the city walking track.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
Would this be something, like the books, would they come to the council to make the decision on what was going out there, or would that be a separate entity that would do that?
I would think it would be a Rotary decision, but you guys are always welcome to look at what we would do before we put it down there. And you could...
We can make that a stipulation, that we had to approve all materials that go out there.
The cool thing about this is that it has a QR code that the kids can also scan, and it'll actually show a little video of what's happening on that page.
I like that.
And they've written tons of books. They're wonderful folks. They're over the Smith County Amateur Radio here in Smith County, so doing logical things for the community. But you guys are welcome to look at that if you like.
Thank you. Question. It's very generous of them to give it to the, to sign the rights over. Is it something that it might be worth? It may not be a whole lot of money, but something to them for letting us do that might be... I know, I'm getting looks over here, but I'm not trying to give money away, but I mean, it's a children's book that they wrote.
So basically, you're saying you like to buy the copyrights?
I'm just saying, it don't have to be a whole lot, but they're offering it for free. I think that's very generous, but there's nothing wrong with...
But they have this book on Amazon. It'll just help them sell the book. I don't think they want anything for it.
Okay. Just throwing it out there.
They have lots of books on Amazon. You should check them out.
Could we possibly insert a little thing in the corner of it, say, you know?
A local author.
Not by a local author, Larry and Cheryl.
We could probably put that on the post, put the author's name, and then have it where we can change it in and out. It's kind of where the author's name goes both.
And they have other children's books, so we might just be able to save them for a while and not have to worry about copyright.
We can make it something where we can just slide the author's name in and slide it back out or something like that.
Yeah. But we, we will be looking for help with the labor if possible, but we want...
I think we can find someone to help you do that. All right, the next thing that I have on the mayor's, remember last when we talked about the security cameras at the parks, and I said we had a possibility of getting a grant? We've been approved for a $4,000 grant for that project, so it knocked it down to about 11, was it, no, $13,000? So we got $4,000 for that. I've also, we're going to be applying for another grant for the fence down at the city park. It's a $50,000 T-Mobile grant for ballparks, fencing, and stuff like that.
They were applying for?
Yeah, we haven't applied for that one. It just, I just found out about it, what was it, Scott, yesterday? It was like yesterday, I just found it yesterday.
Correct.
But there's another one on there too, from Public Enemy Partners?
Yeah, the, right here, the Conservation Grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the resolution. It's not on my mayor's report, it's in the actual thing. All right, that's all I've got. The department heads, who wants to go first?
Okay, you have a couple of documents there for you. You have the monthly financial report. Highlight a few things, and then I'm going to do a little discussion about, I need some guidance, how to proceed on a few things. It's not going to be a vote, but I kind of have to, I need a little guidance from you. If you look at the key financial metrics, general fund cash, at September 30th, we had $4,824,022. Streethead cash, $227,032. Water sewer fund cash, $2,533 and $516. Our debt at September 30th, $1,667,742. That's all state revolving fund debt. You can see the annualized regulatory water sewer fund operating profit at this moment is $399,060. That will change vastly come December, January. And the reason for that is we were hoping to break ground on Smutman in November, and the project's bid out at 1.4 million, and we have ARP monies of $674,000. So the rest of that is upon us. And then, coming this spring or summer, we will get to the bank erosion project with the Corps of Engineers, and I'll speak to that in just a moment. Do want to go over these ratios, because some may not fully grasp what it is. The general fund cash ratio, our goal is 10 to 1, meaning we can pay off our current debts 10 times to, we have that much cash to pay. Well, our ratio is 126 to 1, very solid in the general fund. Water sewer fund cash ratio, our goal is 5 to 1, and at present, we're at 16 to 1, very solid. Say that's going to change drastically within the year. Water and sewer fund debt service ratio, and that basically says, can we pay our debt? Okay? And this will change drastically soon. But right now, our goal is 1.5 to 1. Right now, we're at 5.1 to 1, which is, is good. So, all that is to say, moving into cash flow. You have a brightly colored sheet. And I'm just trying to lay the foundation for your thoughts, no decisions tonight. It's not on the agenda for decision, but you need to be able to think about this. But this is a actual and projected cash flow analysis for the water and sewer fund.
Thank you.
Okay? And you have each month listed across through there, okay? And it gives you an idea of where the money's coming from, but you'll notice the red marks, okay? So in those projected months, that's how we're going to be expending money. So if you notice, the Cumberland River Bank erosion, right now, got it planned in June, but it's likely to start sooner than that. And of that, we will have to pay $764,150. All right? That is assuming that the town of South Carthage is able to fund their entire $100,000 park.
Is there a possibility that they're not, or you just watch and say that?
Because I don't know their finances.
Okay.
Yep.
They're not insinuating that?
No, not in any way.
Okay.
I fully expect that to be funded, but I'm a conservative planner. So what I want to really want to highlight is in the lower right-hand corner, you circle that $984,480, okay? That's what I'm projecting we will have on hand at June 30th of 2025 with these projects that we have in play right now.
In general?
No, this is water sewer fund.
Okay, okay.
Water sewer.
Good, great.
Okay? But I don't want it to be less than a million dollars. But that's, and that is assuming, if you'll notice right in the middle, financing, cash flow, cash in. If you'll notice, I've got on there that $764,150, I've got in there that there's going to be cash coming into the town from the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund loan, or transfer, or other sources that somebody else may have come up with. So I'm just giving you a heads up, this is where it's at with the projects in hand. So if I could turn your attention now to item number three on my report. Okay? Funding the bank erosion project. Our share, $764,150. South Carthage's share is $100,000. We've already worked with the Corps. We don't have to have that money all at once, but over the, within the next, between now and June 30th of 2025, we'll expend that money unless something happens and they can't do the project. But they're, they're on it, and it looks like it's going to happen pretty quick. So you need to start thinking about what is the best way that you want to fund that money. I don't desire to pay it all out in cash, because we're going to have to fund the ARP monies, okay? For Smutman, for those water lines, our share of that. So option one is to pay $764,150 from our cash reserves. We do that, we're going to wind up at that $980,000 mark, okay? And that's assuming nothing else happens, like new pumps at the drinking water stations or whatever. That's why I don't want to take the cash down low just for emergencies and so forth. Option two is borrow the funds from the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund or another lender. We'll get the best deal out of the municipal bond fund. They do all the legwork, finding the best deals, and then they present that to you, and the interest rates and so forth.
Scott, you want to mention the local option that they also provide for using our local banks?
Oh, yes. So we've contacted already the local banks and indicated, you know, this is out there. We've told the municipal bond fund folks, here's our bankers here locally, and so it's up to the bank whether they want to participate in this kind of program or not. Some do, some are looking at it, but I don't know what each one of them is going to do. Third option is a one-time, okay, let me say this. State of Tennessee does not want us to move money from the general fund to the water sewer fund, okay? However, a citizen spoke to me, says, can we look at that again? I said, okay, I'll ask again. And so I pursued it. I sent you the whole email string, each of you got that. But it is a possibility, in their words, to do a one-time transfer from general fund to water and sewer fund, but we have to apply to the comptroller. We have to justify why we're looking to do it, and whether they'll approve it or not, I don't know, okay? Because they know where we're at with our rates and everything, and you already know, we tried to get even, but we're not fully even according to them yet.
So the option three, the one-time transfer, I'm just thinking through it, I'm just talking out loud, you know, as I'm thinking about it, but they would possibly let us move that one time from general fund to the water sewer for that, but if we were to go with option one and pay the cash and get down to that $980 number, they probably are not going to let us move that same money over to water sewer to a pump for any kind of other emergency. So you almost, if they would allow us to do it, it's almost...
I asked the question, I said, okay, one time, does that mean one time a week?
Every year.
One time a year, one time in a lifetime? Well, it's a case-by-case basis, meaning it's rarely done.
Depending on the need.
Yes. It's got to be something that's, something that's out of the ordinary. Personally, I think our situation with the bank erosion would be a perfect candidate to pursue that sort of thing, but I don't want to waste the one-time option either. And I also know we have other things in general fund that we're wanting to fund that are needed as well. But that's not my decision. I'm just trying to give you information there.
There's a possible option three would be to pay some of it cash and do some of it, move some of it from general fund instead of all, or...
We could do that, but once again, if I was going to move from general fund one time, I'd make sure I got a good one.
Exactly right.
A figured form.
Yeah.
We don't want to have to raise rates, you know? Now, that makes you another progression note. Yes, it is water and sewer, but it's also environment and erosion. Could it not fall in a different category?
I do not think so, Councilor.
Just because our, the water sewer?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not that thought process. It is that the water sewer fund is designed to be an enterprise fund, it's to work just like a business. Like any of you that are business persons, you run your business to make a profit. Our water sewer fund is the same way. It's not a nonprofit organization, so.
And we're only considering that based on it's the water sewer that needs to... We wouldn't be doing that project if it wasn't for it.
We wouldn't be doing that project if we didn't want to lose one of our tanks into the Cumberland River and then have EPA...
And then it's an environmental issue bigger than any of us...
Pretty big one. I would say there's unfortunately a lot of people in East Tennessee that are going to be able to speak to such issues in all that's happened. I'll let you chew on it. I've looked at it. I have a recommendation, but I'll let you chew on everything. But I think, of course, option four is, don't do it. That is an option. But if you're not going to do that, we need to let the Corps know, because...
The project at all?
Don't you mean? Yes.
I'm downstream from it, so.
I don't think that's enough.
My backyard's downstream from it.
Well, we, the sewer plant is already designed to take that tank out of the thing. They lose capacity, but they've run the piping, so if it was you over to decide to do that, they could just engulcement, and there wouldn't be nothing in the tank.
But down the line, whether it be 10 years, 50 years, whatever it is, there, somebody's going to have to do it. It's going to cost a whole lot more. It would be irresponsible of us not to do it.
I agree.
Talk to things we wish people would have done 50 years ago here for us.
There are other options to think about, but it's out of my hired hand speaking to.
At what point do you think we need to do this, and do we need to do it pretty quick?
I think we need to make a decision in December.
December, okay.
I guess...
Did you, you didn't tell us what your recommendation is, did you?
I did not.
Why don't you go ahead and do it and let us be thinking on it?
I was waiting for someone to ask. My recommendation is to pursue with Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, getting the money, and then if things work out where the cash flow's better, we can always pay it off quicker or whatever we need to do there. Cash flow is going to be our primary consideration in water sewer fund. I know all the discussion about water rates and all that stuff, but we're at the break even, okay? If we decide we're going to continue on with putting in drinking water lines and putting in sewer water lines, which we all know is desperately needed, there's going to be increases, even whatever funding we get. But even if we didn't do any of those lines, there's going to be increases in the future, because the last increase had nothing to do with building new infrastructure. It had everything to do with the current operating cost and what we've incurred. Say that again. The last increase had nothing to do with capital infrastructure. It had everything to do with the operating costs that we're incurring now, okay? So to move forward with capital, we have to be creative and make use of the available resources.
Go over the minimum borrowing of the $1 million. We don't have to spend it all, but we have to borrow the $1 million, and we would have basically whatever's left over. If we ever needed something in an emergency, we could tap into that money. But we had, it's a set at $1 million.
But it is not a line of credit.
That excess then of the $764,150, then which fund would they go into? Would it go into water sewer?
No, I think they would keep that until we actually need it. They're not, they don't make you take the full $1 million. They just say that's the lowest loan they do in this program.
Okay.
It's kind of like a building loan for a house. If I have the loan set up, it has a cap on it, and as we need it to borrow on that capital infrastructure loan, we borrow it, but it can be used for operating expenses. It's got to be an infrastructure thing, and it's not a line of credit, because that's against the law. This is Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund and the special things that they got set up through Tennessee Code Annotated and the legislature long ago when they were a public housing authority. So to me, they have flexibility and credibility, and they make use, they themselves don't borrow money. They, they operate it through banks, okay? So we told them we'd like to use local banks if the rates are there, but it's all an economic business decision when we go with it.
So... I haven't looked into this, but does the municipal bond fund purchase bonds that are issued by the city? And that's how the debt is generated? And it's financed by...
The answer is, to your question, yes, they do that, but that's not what this is.
Okay.
Okay?
Have we thought about...
I mean, that, that is an option.
Or a bond, yeah.
That the town itself could issue a bond, do what's called a bond issue, and the public buys those bonds, okay? And we pay interest on those bonds, and you can raise money that way. I'm not sure the town of Carthage, I think that, to me, that's a, building a new sewer plant or building a new drinking water plant or that kind of project to do a bond issue. For what we're looking at, I think this is a good way to start with. And, you know, when we borrow money, whether it's RF or whatever, we're going to do it in manageable chunks, okay? Because we do have some responsibility to pay portions of it upfront, some of it when we're billed, is what I should say. We can string out our contractors probably under an SRF loan, but I've worked for 30 years on the other side of that, and if we want contractors to bid on our stuff, we got to think about them, okay, as well. So that's why I always want to have the cash flow to do what's ethical.
Scott? Just because I'm curious, what would the cash ratio be for the water sewer fund? If we paid out the entire 700-whatever-thousand and ended up, well, say we paid cash for all of these, and we ended up with $984,480, what would the cash ratio and the debt service ratio be roughly?
It's a good question. I don't have that off the top of my head, okay?
I can't do that kind of that off my head either.
Okay. Well, I just, it changes every month, okay, based on how much cash you have on hand and then how much accounts payable you have at the time. So if a month, we have a standard, normal month for payables is $140,000 in water sewer fund, okay? But I know if there's a passing of the ordinance tonight and we do these water pumps, you know, we're looking at potential payables of being another $100,000 at the end of a month. So it changes, but that's a good question. I can use the, what's average of that and kind of do, but I think it would be, if it's 900, it's 140, it'd be, it'd be less than the, than the five to one. It'd be close.
That was my question.
Probably two or three to one, something like that. But, you know, based on all the research, it's long ago, you know, these ratios are what PhDs and professionals recommended for municipalities, these are good ratios to give you a good idea of where we're at. So, and my ratios are conservative because I don't want to step or be in a spot where we're hurt. I don't want to have to worry about making payroll. I want to worry about if we have an emergency, can we fund it? So that's why I approach it from a conservative standpoint. And just know we're making use of the available state revolving fund loan programs that are out there. We've applied for a community development block grant for a million dollars for water lines. That's coming up again next week for 2025. We'll apply for another million dollar CDPG for drinking water lines. Whether we get it or not, it's two, two years down the road, okay? Those wheels run very, very slow. So I think we're doing the best we can do with what's available to us. Remember cash flow, cash flow is king. Cash flow will dictate kind of what we do on that. Okay, as far as the utility billing, that will be implemented in October, this month for our new program and the property tax implementation is in January. And that, once those are done, we'll have phase one of progression to our technologies pretty well complete.
You're talking about the computer program?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to keep everybody up to date where we're at on that, but hopefully a lot, well, not hopefully, there will be a lot of good features that we're going to be able to do using the new software. Already you're seeing some of it, like the expense approval report, be able to pull it without having to do three hours of work is one benefit, but it's going to be of all departments once we get there. We'll do that a little bit at a time, see where we're at. Questions of me. Anybody else department heads up anything? No. Y'all good? Okay. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. What we'll do, Jesse, since Halloween's been going on for a while, we'll put that up first under unfinished business.
Can I make a motion that we add Hometown Halloween to the list of the resolution that we made? Pretty simple.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Tell me what you're saying.
That we added, we have a list of three, if I'm not mistaken, three or four that we added, that this would be the fourth, that we would close the street down for Hometown Halloween.
And what the resolution says is that the council will not consider street closures for any events except for these. They say you would still have to vote to do a street closure if you added that to the resolution.
Would you amend your motion just to make it so we can close the streets? We're going to make a resolution this time and then vote on it with the only people next time?
You can keep the resolutions that you have and suspend it or rescind it or kneel it.
Just to be perfectly honest, I mean, we've got a whole new council coming in here pretty soon and that could be a totally different dynamic. I think it should be on there. We need to redo it. So however, we need to do it to make it to where they can close it down for this month because it's kind of last minute and then make it going forward.
Just make the motion to close the street?
I want to close this, I want to make the motion that we close the street this year and that we implement that into our resolution that going forward, it doesn't have to be voted on. I don't see why we can't do that.
I'll second.
I have a comment. So I've talked to Stephanie and I love the Halloween. I love that they get to do that. We've talked about options and I've even said, we're trying to make a, and I agree with Ms. Green too, it is, it is a great community event. My only thought is, and it's not so much that I'm opposed to closing the street, I feel like we're taking an unsafe place and trying to make it safer, putting a liability on the city, when I think there are safer places already to still do it. I think Carthage would love, everybody here, I think, would love to still have it, but I do think we have safer places already available since it's grown so large that we could move it to, and that's what I have spoke with Stephanie about, suggested, could we move it to off of Main Street? Could we move it to the city park? Could we move it to the walking track, which is huge and would give opportunity for lots of activities and lots of.
It's light down there. Well, you said it to walkin' track?
Yeah.
No light.
So that, that's my thoughts on it. I'm not, it's not so much closing the street one more time, although we did already vote on that and I'm kind of leaning toward leaving that like that and finding a safer place to still continue to have it.
You know what you got to do?
I have to make a motion to leave Robert's rules and allow her to speak real quick.
Yes.
And then go right back into them. Got a motion to second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
So just on a couple of those things, for liability, we take all of that when we do the event. We have liability insurance. It's also no different for the other three events who all already have happening there, all that have children. When it comes to the park and the reason we don't do it, if it rains one day down there, we can't set up. It takes us an entire week to set up for this because we do haunt animes outside that has to be set up and secured. And down there, if it rains one day, we can't do that. For the street closure being necessary where we are, there's space on the grounds for the things, but it's the amount of children crossing the road. Even if this were on, down at the city park, all of those kids are still going to be walking across Main Street at some point to get to the city park. It's, it's the kids crossing the streets.
Not, not Main Street, industrial drive.
I mean, the kids from this side of the city would have to cross Main Street to get to the park.
If they walked, yeah, I guess you're right.
And a lot, a lot of the families that come to, I mean, there are people from the whole county that come to this event. It's how we got 3,000 people last year, but it's primarily here and on Main Street because it's the son of the town and they're going to cross the street. If we don't close it, they have to cross it to get to the courthouse yard because we can't do it on the other side. And if we did, then the other side would have to cross the street. And if it was at the park, they'd have to cross the street to walk down to the park. And that's not a central location anyways, the central location.
Like another day, like unless it was on a Saturday afternoon where parents are working, they don't have to come in and rush to get dinner. I've talked to parents who would love to have it a Saturday afternoon and it could still be for Halloween, it could still be a great event. It's just a better place or the parking lot behind the courthouse. It is almost always empty in the evening if you still wanted to have it on that day. I just think we have lots of options rather than with it being so many people.
Even if they, even if we do it at that parking lot, they still have to cross the street and that's the thing that I'm concerned about no matter where we do it, is the kids walking and crossing the street, even if they park, they have to cross the street because there's not that much parking.
Because if they're on east and that's on west, they're going to have to do it either way.
Well, like any community event, you're right, but typically they're with parents.
I mean, typically.
Whether they're knocking on doors or they're crossing the street. On Halloween night, they're going to cross streets. You're absolutely right on that. I just think there's a safer place already in effect that we wouldn't have to try to make it unsafe because, you know, we had somebody hit by a car on, on the day that the street was closed.
For the, for the Halloween event?
No, not for the Halloween.
I think it was Walton Days.
It was for Walton Days, yeah. Because they didn't realize the, the cones had been taken down and a street, then a car came through and somebody was.
We also won't be using cones. We already have fences dominated for us to use, whether it's on the courthouse lawn or those streets are closed, there will be actual fencing, so.
I'd really like Chris to look at a, at a, at a better location. I think there are some, but I'm not opposed to the Halloween. I like it, it's great.
You said you got fencing on both sides.
Yeah, we have enough fencing to cover, if we, if we close the road, to cover both sides of the road closer.
I just need to clarify real quick, the Hometown Halloween organization, they have its own liability insurance, which is great, but that does not absolve the city of liability. That doesn't mean that under any circumstances, the city won't have.
They could say both.
Sure.
We talked about that before with other events, that it, it still would be a liability to the city. I'd just like to make it as safe as possible and I'm not sure this is the safest way.
Any more discussion?
Chief Davis could answer this if he's around.
I'm ready.
There he is. For that event, would it be possible to put a squad car on each end?
Well, we could definitely help if we need to. We usually try to have one or two officers up there anyways.
We've talked about putting our signs up, the flashing signs that we have that say children ahead.
We did, yeah, me and the mayor's already talked about that as well.
I think it'd be as possible. A squad car on each end.
We actually usually have at least one officer up there handing out candy as well and stuff. In the past, we've done that as well.
County does too. Usually this county always has a.
Yeah, we need to.
So we, we can definitely help if at all possible, if we need to, and if y'all choose to do it, we can help as much as we can.
You're doing so.
If that's, if that's the question you want answered.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on closing the road down for this Halloween. That's what this vote is for. Everybody understands that, right?
I don't think that was my motion.
My motion was to shut it down this one, but to also.
Well, add it to the resolution for the next one, right? You're right.
But that's what we're voting on too?
Yes.
It's all one motion. We would be changing the resolution that would affect next Halloween.
Eddie Hall.
And going forward.
Right, and you still have to vote on the street closure, just like you have to vote on the street closure for Walton Days or any of those.
That's right, okay.
We're doing a roll call for non-money?
Yep.
Yes.
What are we doing?
We're just, I just want to, just people have concerns saying they didn't vote for this, they didn't vote for that, so I want to make sure.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries. Get that to your bench. First item on, well, second item under unfinished business is the second reading of the budget amendment, which is the BA 202-40905-2. Is everyone familiar with that budget amendment? Well, I'll just tell you what it's about. It's regarding the water sewer fund budget increase for replacement of drinking water high-service pump, drinking water intake pump and town's drinking water filtration. It's a pump that we replaced, we just had to move the money within the, the water sewer budget.
And just so we know, how much was it? How much do we have to move?
I don't have that on here. It's not a move, this is an increase to.
Yeah, increase to the budget from.
This is not a transfer, it's an increase.
It comes from where?
It comes out of existing funds that we have. So we're saying we're increasing the budget amount because we need to spend money for these extra pump stations.
But the money is there, we're just.
Yeah, we have two and a half million dollars.
You're talking about in.
In cash, but the budget itself, I can't overspend the amount that we've got allocated.
Is it 130?
130, we're saying we're going to spend, increase our budget by 130,000.
To buy this pump?
To buy these two, two pumps, whatever they are, Rusty.
Can Rusty talk to that? Is that okay before we? Or do we need to do it?
Go back into Robert's rules.
Let's say, well, let's go back, make a motion and go back into Robert's rules?
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Now, I would say, do we need to make a motion about this in order to discuss and then bring him in or should we?
It's however you want to do it. If you want to make the motion to.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve based on, for us to be able to discuss it.
Okay, repeat that, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve in order for us to discuss it.
I'm second.
Okay.
So we go into discussion, I guess we would make a motion to go out of Robert's rules again so that we could hear from Rusty.
Yes, second.
All in favor? Okay, the state of Tennessee requires that we have redundancy in our pump systems. In other words, it takes three pumps at each pump station, raw water intake and at the plant to be in compliance with the state law. Last year, we budgeted to replace two of our smaller pumps, which we, we did. It's a good thing because within a month of replacing those two pumps, our big pump that we use broke, so we're back down to just the two new small pumps, which will suffice for what we need. But in order to have that redundancy, I've got to repair that other pump. Now, the intake at the river is another issue. We've had an ongoing problem there. We've had, we've had a failure there. We had it repaired. The repair lasted a month or so, broke again. We decided that instead of repairing it again and throwing good money after bad, that we might order to look into replacing, redesigning, putting something a little bit heavier, you know, duty in. Again, it's a redundancy issue. I, right now, I'm at about, I'm supposed to have double redundancy. I'm, I'm probably got, I've got 50% redundancy I'm down to it, so I've got to get those repaired. We didn't put it in the budget this year because the one broke after the new budget was approved. The, the other one, we were working on trying to get it fixed and it just didn't work out. We don't have it. We, we need to look at replacing.
How much has it gone cost to it?
The two pumps, the two pumps that we replaced at the water plant are two 500 gallon per minute pumps. Those two pumps cost us $66,000 each. No, total. So we, which I think was very reasonable considering what I was looking at. The pump I'm having to replace now is a 1,000 gallon a minute pump, so I expect it to be higher than that $33,000. I'm, I'm estimating 56, because it's twice the pump the other two were. The, the small, the pump at the intake is a smaller pump, which will move 500 gallons a minute, so I'm expecting it to be in the lower range. The 130 we estimated was just to make sure we covered all our bases.
You may not need all that.
No, and if we don't, it'll be, you know, it'll go up to the bid process and whatever the, whatever the company that gets the bid that suits our needs best is what we'll go with. So we'll try to mitigate the cost.
Okay, so what concerns me and the only thing really at that point, if, if it doesn't go to the 130, say you need 100, we need to make sure that there's transparency that that 30 doesn't bleed over into the, the next year or the 130 really, because what tends to happen, I'm not saying here, just in budgets, I think, is you increase it that one time, the next year it's like, well, we have, we used that last year, why don't we just use that as our metric? We want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
We, we've never run, we've never ran, as far as I know, any of our departments on the fact that we've got extra money laying around here, we're going to spend it. So, so what, what we do is, is we, we do what's best for the city. If we can get a quality company to replace the pumps at lower cost, we'll definitely do that. And more than likely, since the, the, it'll be advertised in the paper, it'll go through the bid process, the, you know, we may have to run the prices by you anyways, so it'll all be above or below. It's just something that's required and I've got to have that double redundancy because if, if something goes down, you got to have a backup.
Sure. Motion to go back into Robert's rules first.
All in favor?
Motion to spend up to 130, that's so we don't have to necessarily do it, up to 130. So that would be a, a pass.
We're actually just approving the budget amendment.
To do it.
Then you can make a second.
To make it up to?
Yeah.
Can we just, yeah, we can just do that. Well, just make that, I mean, motion to approve and add up to.
Okay.
Keep it simple.
Up to 180,000.
30, 130, right.
We already got 50 on the books.
So 180?
180.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on unfinished business is item number three. It's the second reading of the ordinance C020240905-2. It's the one regarding the, uh, meters on the fire suppressions in all business. Everyone familiar with that? Okay?
Motion to approve?
I'm second. I don't wanna hog all the seconds, so.
Go ahead and do a roll call, just dealing with the money.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the, uh, agenda is a resolution for the grant that we just took. We discussed it, but we never voted on it. That's my fault, so we just need to approve, so everyone take that four thousand dollars.
Can you say just what that is, just for the...
Just for the, the resolution to be in the books and voted on.
But I mean, what it's for, the four thousand dollars for...
The four thousand is for the, uh, it's called the, basically, the property conservation grant.
Yeah, what will we use it on as as well?
The cameras for the, that you guys approved last month.
Right, okay, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we don't have to vote on that, cause we're getting money. All right, the next one is the main and third traffic lights. I'm gonna let the chief fuck on that.
Back again, guys. Can we hand y'all some stuff out? You don't mind?
Sure.
It's all the same.
Kinda like stopping on them. Oh, ferry road.
I got something.
When I try and get here today.
So, if y'all wanna take a second to look at it, I'll give you just a minute. What this is, is this is a conversation that I've had with one of the, I think it's the engineer down there at Stansel Electric, okay, just so you know. So, what I did was, is, um, I went to him with the concerns for the council, what, what you guys wanted me to do, and I asked him multiple things. And so, what you can see is, and I've kinda highlighted on, on the little bullet points on the side, the red part, or at least the bottom parts that are red, are his answers to the questions, okay? And I'll let y'all look over that for just a second, and I'll just kinda go over it with you in, in just a minute.
So... How do you make turning illegal?
You can.
Just do not turn.
You can. Bad idea, but anyways, so, I'll, I'll go ahead and start with it, and I'll let y'all kinda finish up. But so, so one of the first things we was discussed last meeting was, it was asked that if we could keep Main Street northbound and southbound flowing at the same time. And I, I told you previously that I had a concern with the turn lane not being there anymore and possibly backing up traffic. So, when I, when I said that to him, his exact words over the phone to me were, I can go ahead and tell you exactly what that's gonna do, it's gonna back up traffic even more than what currently already is right now. I said, okay, I said, well, look, I'm gonna go over these things with you over the phone, I'm gonna send you an email, kinda going over everything, and then that way, I want you to respond back in the email so I can share it with the council, if you don't mind, and any concerns you may have. He said he'd be glad to do that, this, this is right here, okay? So, the first option we talked about is how we can get traffic flowing a little bit better northbound, southbound. He did not like that idea initially, what I just told you, okay? He put down there underneath of it, options. He said you can leave it as is, that's an option, okay? He said if you risk opening the intersection to traffic back up in one direction, um, and if a vehicle is traveling northbound, turning onto Third Avenue, uh, west, or traveling southbound, turning onto Third Avenue east. Also, it says you can activate traffic northbound and southbound together, but make all left turns illegal. That's, that's a terrible idea, in my opinion.
You'd have to hire staff.
Well, the problem with that would be is you got a lot of commercial traffic that turns, that goes down Third Avenue towards DT McCalls, going down to Sam. There, you know, there's a lot of places, delivery trucks go down that way, uh, Smith Kenny Hardware, you know, there's all kinds of business that goes that way. So, I think that's a terrible, terrible idea, in my opinion. The next option we talked about was, I think y'all brought up the possibility of putting in the pressure lines in the pavement, you know what I mean, where it kinda trips it after somebody pulls up. So, when I expressed that to him, I said, well, I said, what if we kinda left it to where northbound and southbound is flowing simultaneously, you know, at the same time, but you put pressure, uh, essential, uh... The pressure strips or loops in the ground on Third Avenue. That way, if somebody pulls up, it can trip it, they can go, and then once they leave, he said, that's not a bad idea, he said, that's actually a pretty decent idea. I said, well, give me the cost, what that would cost. Sixteen thousand dollars. This, sixteen thousand five hundred is what it would cost essentially to put two of those in, one on Third Avenue east, one on Third Avenue west.
Sixteen total.
Sixteen five for both of them, from my understanding.
Eight-two-fifty.
And then I said, well, we have to replace the traffic control box, that old outdated traffic control box. He said he didn't think so. He said, however, he said...
Probably need to.
You probably need to. It is old. And I said, how much that cost? He said, forty-two thousand.
Ooh. How old is it?
Oh, it's probably forty years old. I'm just guessing. It's, it's old, it's, it's been around forever. Most of the ones on Main Street are very, very old.
Okay. And you, you and I did talk about this, just to, you know, transparency on that too, and there, supposedly there was money that was allocated to be doing this anyway.
It was budgeted to replace the boxes, yes.
Yes, so myself and...
Up to that much, or more than that?
CFO, uh...
Eighty thousand dollars we budgeted.
There's eighty thousand in the budget right now. When were we planning on doing it? Possibility this year, this current fiscal year. So, if it's already in the budget, do it. So, anyways, getting back, so if you hypothetically put those two in, those two pressure loops in, and you replace the traffic control box, you're looking at fifty-eight something, some change, okay? But we do, we need to leave it alone.
That needs to be...
Now, do I still think you may have a little bit more traffic accidents there? You still could. I'm not gonna say you can't. And I'll say one more thing too, if traffic's flowing more now at Third and Main, you may have more of a backup down, down Main Street a little bit more, maybe at Fife, maybe at, you know, at the old bridge. I'm not gonna say you may not have another traffic issue based on this. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying it's a possibility. I want y'all to think about that and know about it. But I think his opinion was, if you're gonna do it, replace everything, put the two strips in and, and replace the box. And we have some other boxes we may need to replace too at some point in time as well, so. Does anybody have any questions? Did I answer everything best I could?
What's involved in actually putting the strip, what, what happens?
They will dig a little line, they will dig up the pavement, they will put the strip in, they'll run the wires up, and then they'll run the wires over to the box and then feed it in.
So, does that include, does that cost include that they...
I think it should include the labor, would be my opinion, as far as I...
It's everything.
As far as I know.
Should it all be bid out here?
Sure. Yeah, but that's what, that's what Stansel says.
You'll never know it's there.
No.
Shouldn't. It'd be no different, it'd be no different than like Walmart's traffic light or McDonald's.
It's not like a big spot, it's just a spot.
Yeah, it's a little spot. They'll fill it back in, you won't even notice it. Um, you won't, you won't, you won't go up until it's there. Uh, and they won't do Main Street, from my understanding, we were just gonna do Third. Essentially, you're keeping Main Street moving all the time, and then...
The other ones are...
The other ones would be the ones that'd be red, and then if somebody pulls up, trips it, then it'll make Main Street red and then Third can move. The only difference would be at nighttime, we'll probably put it on flash after whatever it is now, eight o'clock, I think, so.
So, with that cost, would it be better to do one on Fife also, cause you're saying that could back up?
I say we'll wait and see what it looks like. Now, let me say this too, we have been having to reset, uh, Fife Avenue again, the traffic light keeps going to flash automatically again the last, I don't know, couple of weeks now, we've had to set it about once a day. It's just, it's an old box as well.
Is it been all of the age of the box that's breaking the law?
Yeah, we just, every time we call them up, they'll replace one or two little things, and you're just putting Band-Aids on something that's old and needs to be fixed at some point in time.
Would it be a better idea to go ahead, or maybe it's even cheaper if they come out and replace both of those, especially if it's in the budget already and have to come back out two different times?
We can do a whole bit, we can replace that box and then replace this box and put the strips in, maybe, it may be the best idea.
It's eighty, I mean, eighty thousand the budget already, I mean, that's...
It, it won't be, it won't be two trips either, they'll be here and then they'll do it.
That was extra money.
I do so. I do think it would be a good idea to start replacing boxes, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
So, my motion would be, um, do we need to go back in the, did we go down?
No, we didn't go down.
Okay, so my, my, uh, motion would be to, uh, we definitely need to get a price on that second box, make sure it's not just some more expensive than this other one that we're looking at. But I would make a motion to look into the cost of that second box, but approve this first box being changed out as well as the two loops and, um, redoing that, that track.
Could I make a suggestion?
Want to?
Why don't we put it out for bid, and we don't have to do the second box, the boxes is too much, but then we'll have all the figures at one time. Cause they may come in cheaper during a bid. Like you say, you, you wanna go ahead and do the, the one box and the one loop.
Have these people do it?
Yeah.
You're saying have somebody else do it?
We have to bid it out. So, someone else may come in cheaper. Well, I'm saying while they're bidding, we can bid the two boxes in the loop, and then, then we say, okay, we don't wanna put one in. And the, that, if not, we have to do the bid process again, cause it's gonna be over ten thousand.
It'll be next year before it ends up changing. It'll be twenty-twenty-five before it changes.
How about that?
Well, if it goes out to bid, and then they finally come in, then we can start next month and all that kinda stuff.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I...
Putting up in snow and it'll be next spring before we can do it. Versus saying, let's, these are the numbers, throw it out for bid, let's just get it done.
But it wouldn't be any different than bidding them both at the same time, is what I'm saying. You're gonna put a bid out there, everybody's gonna bid it all.
And once we get the amount, we can decide if we wanna do one or two.
You know, I know you guys wanna do the first ones.
Yeah.
But if we get the, you talked about the second one, when the bid comes in and says, okay, this is the cheapest way to do it, it's a, we don't gotta go another two weeks and then another three months.
Well, then, I'll, I'll amend to do that. I just, like I said, I, my biggest thing, I just don't want it to be next spring before this stuff gets, gets done.
So, rescind that one?
I rescind that and make the, the motion to bid out both, uh, boxes and, uh, I mean, all the stuff, yeah.
I'm second. Anything we can do to help that mess down there, I'll do it.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Warren?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the business, business, next item on the agenda, new business is new hire procedure. There were some things that happened last week, and I'll take blame for a lot of it. What happened is, and how it got confused, is we changed our HR program. Danielle used to handle all the HR, and Julie handled, it was like a split. We put it all in one, under one roof. That one roof didn't know that we're supposed to put the applications into the packets, so that's on me. That's my fault for not having those. Another thing is, is I said, I asked Roger, I said, did you call all of them? He said, yes. I didn't know they whittled it down to three people, cause I don't get involved in the interview process. So, that was all my fault last week on that, that miscommunication on that. So, the procedure would be the same, supervisor's interview, you'll get the applications in your packet, and you vote. Go ahead.
I'm, I'd just like to make a suggestion, if I could.
Yeah.
Uh, the thought occurred to me of the possibility that, and I know you don't wanna do it during the regular meeting because of it being on TV, but have each applicant come in and state their name and just a three or four sentences about them, and, uh, so we get to know them a little better.
I, I don't agree with that because you won't be supervising that. The supervisors, the one W supervising, they have to make work, make them work, but I mean, y'all, y'all pick them, we'll do it.
Well, I mean, with the supervisors could be there for it too.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
As somebody that applied here, I wouldn't have wanted my company to know that until I was ready to...
And that's why we've always done it this way, to protect the...
I mean...
Don't do it on camera.
He said not.
So, like taking a brief from the camera and then we'd be able to legally do that?
Beforehand?
Maybe you said, maybe said it for five-thirty leaving instead of six o'clock.
Everything we do as a body is public record, so we can have it filmed.
We can't stop, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, we can't just shoot the camera, but that's what we're going to executive session, that doesn't qualify.
It's always been a policy to listen to the supervisor and take the supervision, but we do usually see it, but we usually take the supervisor's...
I don't see why, as we need to interview him. I, I don't mean any way disrespectfully, but...
We have, because we have the application.
Yeah, if you have the information.
Go ahead, Scott.
I spoke with John Grub, who is the HR consultant for MTS, and even though I don't like his answer, he said, any applicant has no confidentiality. When they come, it's public knowledge, and so, what we've tried to do is a courtesy...
Over a holiday.
Is, yes, but, and I understand, I don't like that, but, you know, that's kinda the process. And also, so you know, in the future, we've already written some recommendations about how we go about this, so every department will do it exactly the same way. You will be the ones voting on how the procedure is going to be, and we'll have it codified, that this is what's the procedure, so there is no question about it, and it'll take legislative action to change it once it's put into place.
That'll be the next council that votes on that, not this one, right?
It'll be in the spring before we can get to that.
It wouldn't be necessarily us, technically not all of us making that decision, but...
I won't be able to get it finished.
But we're gonna work on updates.
Yeah, there's a lot going into it. Cause there's not really, there's not a procedure in the charter that says by hire. It says supervisors, chief of police, it goes that far, but it goes to hourly employees, there's no, it's not broke out to that.
Which, my understanding, because it doesn't, it's implied that it comes back to the governing body to make that decision.
That's, that's why you, you get to...
That's the implication.
That's why you guys vote on it.
Right, so we just, I think the biggest issue, and I'll talk about it because, I mean, that's...
Yeah, you wanna incorporate yours into it?
Well, if you wanna make it next or whatever, however you wanna do it, I mean, I, my, uh, agenda item that I've asked to be added, um, which you guys did, thank you, um, is about this. I think the biggest issue was that we didn't, we started off, we didn't know who they were, you know, and even if it was just in our packet, it doesn't necessarily have to be said on camera who it is, but us being able to see who they are. And I wanna be super, super clear, because apparently this, uh, it's, it's a rumor at best, but it was said that I don't trust the supervisors. That's not the case at all. I love all of our supervisors, I have zero issues with any one of them, uh, but there are, there are, there should be always a, uh, boundary in place. Just like, uh, and I've said this to several people, just like I, I, as the vice mayor, I have access to the city's, um, accounts, bank accounts. But I don't have just unlimited amounts of, uh, power to be able to do that. I have to get multiple signatures to be able to do that. And I'm not offended that there are safeguards in place to make sure that I wouldn't do anything that I shouldn't do. And I think that's, that's the biggest thing, it's about, uh, this is government, so it's transparency, it's accountability, everything has to be out there and open. My biggest issue with the whole thing really isn't even that anybody didn't even think wrong, I think there's just not procedures in place. But what it turned into is, um, after the last meeting, I got home and I believed everything that was said. I believed that one person showed up for an interview, I even said on camera, I said, well, that makes voting pretty easy. You know, I didn't have a problem with you saying that, I did not believe you.
That was the information that I had.
I believed what you said, but then when I got home, um, I got a, unsolicited, I didn't reach out to anybody, but I had a, and one of the applicants reached out to me on social media and, uh, asked why that was said, because they weren't called. And I didn't think a whole lot of that, to be honest with you, cause that was just one. I was like, well, maybe they, they can get the job, they're upset, whatever the case is. But then I woke up the next morning and had another message from another applicant that said they weren't called. And I said, well, that's something I need to pay attention to, and I mean, I think that's something we need to discuss, because if there, if there's even an implication that something wrong was done, I think the council needs to know that, and I think we need to have a conversation. So, I did, I, everybody got the email, I sent out an email requesting a special call meeting so we could, we could talk about it. Um, I waited three days and heard nothing, and then called City Hall to see what was going on, and was told that mayor says, we're not telling when he calls, that we're not gonna have it. And that's what, that's happened?
Yes.
Okay, and then I asked for it to be put on the agenda, I said, well, fine, you know, I'll, I'll talk about it. I said, the council needs to know what's going on. And so, I asked for it to be on the agenda, and I was told that you said that you didn't want it to be put on the agenda.
Did you get that?
Yeah, we, we...
I said, I, I was, I told her I was putting it on there anyway.
We don't have the same agenda item.
He had new hire procedure, but Jesse emailed about...
Well, I mean, I thought it all would, I thought it all went under the same thing. I'm not trying to stop you from putting, we just put four more on, I'm not trying to stop you from putting anything on there.
Well, I mean, you, the, the council would make the decision of what, if we could, just like I did, I mean, I asked for the council to put it on, I have a secondary way to be able to get it on the agenda. But I mean, the, the problem is, I know that you have discretion on, um, what goes on to the agenda. You get to decide ultimately, I mean, we can all, we can all request things, but you get to decide.
But I've never turned anybody down.
Until me.
But I, I didn't follow through with that because I thought it was under the same thing, the new hire procedure. I didn't know you wanted to talk about that particular one.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna debate you on it, I, I'll take you at your word that that's the truth, I hope that's the truth, and it's not retaliatory because of the last meeting and where we had issues. I hope that that's not the case, but that goes to an even broader issue. So, my broader issue is that, uh, with, another item that we're gonna talk about is the citizens' concerns. So, and I'll kinda integrate, I guess, into that too. Uh, I mean, that's number one. The number one is, these, these people are saying that they weren't called. And I've gotten two different, I saw, go back, so I'm, I've got... So I'm, I've gotten two different stories. The first story I got was that the supervisors who, or whoever, I wasn't giving names, uh, went through and said, one person had the qualifications. So they called that one person, that one person had to interview.
Okay, where did you get that information from?
Uh, when I came down here to talk to and get the applications.
Did you talk to the person, the two people that did the interviews?
I had talked to, uh, Scott and Zell, we, me and him had a conversation.
Why don't we get the person that did the interviews in, that way you can hear from the order.
And that, that's fine, I have no problem with that. Cause again, I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything wrong. I think the procedures need to be.
I want you to get it clarified.
But this, but this is the problem. So I got that, I had that, uh, said to me and then, um, weeks, I mean, two weeks later, I hear that three people had the qualifications, that we narrowed it down to three and that those three people were called. The problem is, that doesn't jive with, I, I ended up calling all of the applicants. The two had reached out to me, one person got it, one person I couldn't get a hold of, the other two I called and they both said they weren't. They weren't called. So I don't know how three people were called, if at best, if that one person didn't answer me, if those two people were called, then two people were called. I don't understand how that doesn't make sense.
Well, see, I can't answer that cause I didn't call them, so let's get the person here that did that.
I'm fine.
Hey, Roger. Would you explain what you did during the hiring process?
No. We went, well, first off, this is what we put in the paper. Town car is just seeking to hire a maintenance worker level one. Applications must have emphasis on asphalt and concrete work. Okay. We had six applications, we went through all six. We decided to pick the best three. I called the three myself.
Okay.
I had one that called back. One's mother called two days later and the other one never did respond.
Okay.
But we had one person that put in an application that they had concrete and asphalt experience. Only one.
Okay, and so that was my big, and again, you and I have never had any issue. I don't have an issue with you, I don't have a non-trust of you. That's not the case at all. Uh, my thing is just the safeguards to make sure, because there were accusations of a neighbor and the friendship type thing and, uh, you get into favoritism, nepotism, that kind of stuff, we don't want to be a part of that, obviously. And that's what I want to safeguard again, so I just want to make sure that that didn't happen, that's all, that's all. And so when I, when I talked to those other two people, they both said they weren't called. We, obviously, we know one was called because they came in, interviewed and got the job. The other person that I wasn't able to get a hold of may have been the same person you weren't able to get a hold of, so that person's not in there. But the other two said that they didn't receive a call.
I only called three.
Technically, four, four of the six said they didn't receive a call, but you called three.
I called three. I had one no answer, one mom called two days later and then the one that we hired.
Okay. So I, I'd be, I guess, I'd be interested in, I mean, obviously not on camera thing, but if you, we could talk and figure out who, who it was, who are the three people that you called and make sure, cause if they're lying to me, then what's their reason to reach out to me to lie about it? You know what I mean? And why would you lie about it? You know what I mean, it doesn't make sense for either person to lie. So that was my biggest thing, I just want to.
And like I said, that's why when I asked Roger, did you call them all, he said, yes, I assumed it was all six, cause I don't get in the interview process. That's why I stayed at the meeting, he called all six and only one showed up.
See, I think all of this could have been.
Avoided by having applications in effect.
We could have, all of this could have been avoided if we had a, the special call meeting when I requested it. I don't understand why it was rejected, why we couldn't have a conversation with the council and make sure that everybody.
Because at that time I was.
Only I knew about it.
At that time, I was talking with the attorney and I was talking with other people that you, so I didn't want to get in there until I had all the facts. And the first thing I said was, look, this is my fault.
See, I'm, I'm not even, again, I didn't blame you for anything.
Ultimately, it's my fault, I mean, no, I'm blaming myself.
Because if, yeah, I would, this is, I'm a two plus two equals four guy, okay? And I, I said in my mind, I said, well, if he, if he was involved in some kind of scheme, like crazy, you know, just happens to be, then why would he say on camera that one person, only, only one person showed up? It didn't make any sense, I didn't accuse you from the beginning.
I didn't accuse Roger of anything.
No, I, I never said. I said, something's, we need to figure out our procedures.
I wanted to get that all hashed out before we're having the conversation.
Then we could have, but. I, I think the biggest thing is, what, what was said was, you're not gonna have it because you don't know what it's about. That's what I was told.
I have to be able to publish a meeting. I can't say we're having a special call meeting.
But you never, you never replied to my email, you never reached out to say, what is this about? You know what I mean, that's, that's just the professional thing that we.
Well, we, we can go back and forth, I've texted you and I've called you quite a few times, you never returned a call.
Not about something specific like a special call meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, just to reiterate, this, to my knowledge, is the very first time and things had changed. So it was an oversight that we did not have the, the application and the resume. I've never seen that happen before.
When I voted for that other one, I didn't have an application in my.
This is the second time.
Is it the second time?
That's after the change, I think, and that's, that's my fault.
I didn't have it, okay. It, it's always been routine to have it and I think we'll have it in the future, um, because I agree we should have.
In the future, when we discuss how you want to do this.
We'll put a procedure.
One of the items will be, you know, if you have twenty applicants or you have six applicants, there's no obligation to interview anybody. Okay? If the twenty applicants don't meet the criteria, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna interview them, okay?
But what if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think you're thinking what I'm thinking. What if they do qualify, they just didn't put it down? They didn't, they didn't know to put a certain thing down? Then you interview them, they're like, oh, I do have experience.
I want attention to detail, if you can't fill out an application correctly, I'm not gonna interview you.
I agree a hundred percent. If you can't fill out an application and put down your qualifications, you don't get the job.
If you can fail, the words write on your resume, if you don't know enough to do a word check, I'm not putting them in charge cash. Okay? So, I've done that.
Again, we have.
Every time I supervise.
But ultimately, it would be up to the council to make that decision.
As far as.
As far as interviewing people that I hired, the people that I hired, I will recommend, and then the council can say, no, we don't want to do that, fine.
And that's always been the policy.
That's not even what I'm saying though.
And most of the time, the supervisors have been long-term hiring people, knowing what the job is. And so we've, we've pretty heavily relied on the supervisors.
So what I'm saying is, the procedure would be what the council would decide on. So if the procedure that the council said was, hey, you're gonna interview everybody, then you would interview everybody. It wouldn't be you saying, hey, I'm not going to.
Do that for whoever you want to.
What's that?
Said Scott's not gonna do that, but you can do that for whoever.
If the procedure that the council came up with said you need to interview everybody, you're not gonna interview everybody.
Question.
But you won't have to worry about that decision, okay?
I got a question. I'm just telling you, that's.
Go ahead, doesn't sound good to me.
And I'm not trying to be mean here, I just, on, on open discussion, guys, all I'm trying to do here is, I want y'all to think about something. If we put a ad in the paper and we get twenty or thirty applicants for something, okay? You really want us to interview thirty people and eighty-five percent of them aren't certified or ain't, you know what I mean, like, I'm, I'm just trying to go like, aren't, aren't qualified to do the job, you really, what, or do you want us to spend more time focusing on the people who are qualified? Or, you know what I mean, does that make sense, like?
I want you to be willing to follow the procedures that the council puts in place.
I, I agree, but at the same point in time, if it's a waste of time and energy, I don't know if that's what's best for the town. I'm not saying we should have to interview everybody, I'm just saying, I've always done this best for the town, I'd say, I'll say that. But I, I just want y'all to think about that, I mean, well, any job.
The one thing is, we're not gonna vote on the procedures.
No, no, I'm just saying, like.
So, let's all think about it.
We can change in a way that the council can all agree on.
Yeah, let's, let's figure out something that we can all.
That's why some discussion for the future.
And on that note. But we are saying that if the council says it, that was just said, that if the council comes up with that procedure, that you will, that the rest of them will do it, but you will not do it, that's not okay.
Well, I won't be here, so you won't have.
But that's not.
What I'm saying to you is, if the council makes a non-common sense decision, okay, about something, I'm not just going to do it just because people say that I have to. If it's not, doesn't have any rational sense to it, and it's not done throughout industry, I'm not gonna do it just because somebody said, this is what you're gonna do. But you won't have to worry about it, it won't be an issue, cause I won't be here to make that decision, I'm just saying.
And that's a big gift.
I can't follow that.
That's a big gift, we can discuss that later.
That's right. My point is, if we make good rules, Tennessee Code Annotated makes good rules, that's what we follow. But to say, okay, we're gonna take out all the stop signs, or we're gonna take out all the stoplights, okay? Those kind of decisions, uh, it's kind of like, as a marine officer, you know, if I say charge the hill, we're gonna charge the hill. But if I say we're gonna do something that's unethical, you're not obligated to do it.
Right.
And what I'm saying is.
I agree with the unethical, but we're not talking about, well, common sense, we're not talking about removing stop signs, we're talking about interviewing people that apply for a job. I don't think there's anything unethical about that.
If somebody comes to me and they got a sixth grade education and they want to handle the cash for the town and they don't know anything about.
That'd probably be a two-second interview.
I'm not going to interview them, okay?
So we want to be time efficient, cause that's the citizens' money as well.
Yes.
Okay, we, let's get back to, let's get back to the agenda, okay? Crazy or not, the next item on the agenda is new hire for the police department.
What's it trying to argue anyway, guys? Talk common sense here, sorry.
You want something, is that how that works?
Yeah, it's very respectful. Here, please pass this around, this is an application for a person. Um, so we had a dispatcher ended up leaving us just for a better opportunity, so that's what's happened, guys. Um, wish you the best, obviously. Uh, so we're having to fill that position at this point in time, so we advertised for it and we had four people apply for the job. Met with three people, interviewed three people, who I felt like were possibly qualified for the job. And, uh, the one who I'm settling on is a person who's worked in law enforcement before, has probably over fifteen years' experience in law enforcement and in dispatch as well, and does a really good job and is, she's a good person. Also, when I do applications and interviews and stuff like that, I talk to the people in my department. I want to know who they feel comfortable with. It's not just me who works here, guys, okay, it's my, it's the employees that work with me. It's the people who are gonna feel comfortable working with this person because their lives and other people's lives are in jeopardy and are at risk with these people. We have to feel comfortable who we're trying to hire. And this person is a very well-respected person and I think she'll do an amazing job for us. And that's the person who I would recommend for this position. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Like I said, not trying to argue about the other stuff, I'm just trying to talk about it, obviously.
How do we know which one you picked, top one?
Yep. That's the top one with her resume and then some certifications.
Oh, so you just put just the one application?
I did, now if you guys want the other ones, I'll get them, I don't care.
No, I was just, I just, I was just checking.
Yeah, I don't mind a bit to do that. But that way it's not confusing, as far as I'm concerned, it's not confusing.
This is kind of the same, same situation though too, where we don't know who the other applicants are, we just.
I can give them to you if you want, like I said, don't mind, they're in my office, I can go get them. Not trying to hide anything at all.
I don't think you, and I don't think anybody else was either.
I, literally, like I said, I do this same as I always do, like every time we have them, I will look at the applications that come in, whether it's for a police officer. We want the best person for the job. Now, you, you're right, sometimes it may be somebody who's not certified or qualified. But you're gonna know those people, you're gonna have some kind of an experience, somebody else will, you know what I mean, like, there's gonna be reasons. But to me, to be honest, we need to say that if we had thirty, if you, if you, for some reason, but we've done it before in the past, put it on Indeed or something. And you're getting people out of Nashville, Kentucky, you can't interview some of these people, you just can't. But I mean, you know, have I done phone interviews before? I've done phone interviews before, you know, trying to narrow stuff down, you know, we always, I try to do it the best we can, so.
I think one of the important things that we can do is if we don't choose them for an interview, we can either send them a letter or a call saying, hey, we went a different direction, so they're not out there.
Party did that, so.
So did I. So did I. I sent eighteen letters out.
No, it's, it's okay, I'm just saying that, that would be something that would help that, instead of interviewing, we just send out a letter.
Does anybody have any questions at all, in any way, shape or form? I'd be glad to answer them, so.
Now, I want you to honor.
Okay.
Final second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, appreciate you guys.
Thank you. The next one is the, uh, resolution from, it's another Public Enemy Partners Resolution to apply for a grant for two backup cameras for the fire trucks. It's a CR two zero two four one zero zero three. Is everybody familiar with that one?
It pays for the entire.
The backup camera.
It pays for all of it.
I think it's a fifty thousand dollar grant.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent match, it's four hundred dollars.
Want to make a matter of forty?
Fifty thousand dollar backup camera.
Well, I applied, we're applying for another fifty thousand dollar grant.
Yeah.
It's the driver's grants for two backup cameras, four hundred dollar maximum.
Yeah, PA requirement. Now it says we have to have, we have to, don't have. Once you got one, doesn't work, we haven't done that one.
Motion to approve.
Take a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is changing of the November council date. Now, I'll tell you why that's on there, I talked to, uh, MTS and I looked at our charter. After an election, we have five days to swear in the new council members. We can either do the one day change or have two meetings, it's up to y'all.
Go ahead. Motion to, uh, not change it for discussion. Going to discussion?
Yeah.
We have five days after they've certified.
Yeah, which is the nineteenth of November.
Yeah, we have, we have five days after they've certified, so that would mean that this council, this current council sits here, just comes in November and then December meeting, they would, the new council would come in.
We have to do it before December according to the.
The swearing in?
The swearing in, yes, by, by the charter.
Yeah, so they, we'd swear them in and then they would come in in December. I don't understand, why would we have to move the meeting so that that new council would move in sooner?
That was just what MTS suggested, I don't, if you move it, you don't move it, I mean, I can have two meetings, three meetings, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, my motion is to not move it. I have a second.
Are you saying move it to?
The twenty, which would be after the, uh, certification.
We is, we are scheduling in November.
If you don't move it, then you have to have a special call meeting.
Yes, if we don't move it, we'll have to have a special call meeting, so those that are still on, will have to come to two meetings in November.
Why, why are you saying that? What am I misunderstanding?
You have to swear the new, newly elected people in within five days of the certification of the election.
Yeah, but.
You have to have a meeting for that.
They recommend, that's what he recommended.
But you don't have to, cause.
I think you have to have a meeting.
They've always done it at the meetings, I don't know.
You've got sworn in, which I mean, that's different, it's not the council, but I mean, Mayor Mason, didn't he?
Right here though.
Was that during the meeting?
Yeah. And that's like, uh, Sam and, which one of the other ones at the meeting too?
Yeah, but do we have to? Does it have to be a meeting?
Wait, 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 first of all, y'all don't need to say anything. Let's, but, I mean, I said, it's up to y'all, I'm just trying to make it easy, cause we only have one meeting in November.
So, attorney, correct me, is it required that, um?
And if we don't have to, then that's good.
Yeah, let me check the charter.
Okay. Cause I'm, I understand that you can take them to your office and do that, it doesn't have to be a meeting, but.
I don't want to have any.
Yeah.
I just called MTS and said, they're not certifying the elections till nineteen, how does that affect it, cause our charter says five days.
Well, you gotta schedule a meeting if you think, keep it, I mean, that's just kind of, yeah, my thing is.
Keep it, I mean, that's just kind of, in my opinion.
I'm, I'm, I'm dealing with it.
I don't know what day.
They checked on the nineteenth.
It just says that the swearing in shall be within five days of certification.
But not necessarily.
Not a meeting.
Wait. With that being.
But I'm saying, I'm not, I, I asked MTS what their suggestion was because I wanted to do that. And they said, have a special call meeting and swear them in.
Which is crazy because I talked to, um.
Before entering upon their day, each shall take an oath before some person qualified to administer the same.
So I talked to a legal.
Sworn in by somebody qualified to administer it, like a representative or a judge or the mayor.
Yeah. So I talked to, uh, Legal Two, the MTS Legal, uh, Ogle Speed was his, his last name. And, uh, he said that, and he said to ask you about it to see what you thought. But his understanding was that, um, time, date, place, I believe is how he put it, is determined by the, um, by an ordinance, so that it can't just be moved around by a simple vote. Is that true or is that not true?
To a meeting time?
No, regularly scheduled. I mean, not, it wouldn't be obviously a special call because obviously you can put that one.
Yeah, but the ordinance says that the, uh, council shall, uh, and I'm just paraphrasing.
Sure.
Shall, um, set the date for regular meetings.
So we had the vow or two.
You, you can move it.
Okay. He just, he acted like it, it wasn't a good idea to be in, having to do it now.
We don't have to have a council meeting to have people sworn in.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Would you stop talking, please?
So, so I have my motion.
It's really disruptive.
I have, I have a motion, we have a second. We don't know, don't discuss.
All in favor? At least we're to leave it the same.
To leave it November the same?
All in favor?
We would be here.
Same.
I'm more abstained because I'm, it'd be a good time to tell you anyway, I'm gonna miss the November meeting.
Okay.
So I don't think I should be involved, you know?
Okay. All right, the next item on the, on the agenda is bid approval for hydraulic breaker, which is a hammer for rock, breaking rocks from the, uh, water department.
How much does that cost? Or is a bid, you're to, to see how much it would cost?
We bid, we bid it out.
Okay.
It's, I think it's seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand there? Seventeen thousand.
That just comes out of general?
It should have.
It'll come out of the water.
I don't, I didn't look at it.
It comes, it comes out of the water sewer.
Out of water sewer.
So it's already in the budget?
Right. Well, it's not in the budget, but what it's for is when we, we put this other water line in, it took almost two days to get through the rock and we got a lot of rock in the city, so.
And then being, yeah.
So isn't it an amendment?
Go ahead, Scott. We have enough money and other equipment.
Okay, that was my question. We already have that.
But it's not, it wasn't budgeted.
It's gotta be an increase.
No, no, it's in, it's in there under there, but it wasn't specifically put in the budget.
I'm not saying moving money over to, I'm saying.
It wasn't named.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't earmarked. How about that?
Okay, that's fair enough. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?